We will begin as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge to our flag.
Pledge we use. Being a safe America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It is now time for public comment. Does anyone here would like to? Present anything? Not? We will move on to the approval of the minutes of our May 2 meeting and our workshop of May 1.
Take the motion to approve those minutes from May 2 and the first as presented.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. And any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. I oppose same signs, so moved. Our treasurer is here.
He has received so on 14th and 15th at $1,835,212.86. That brought us to a cash balance of $5,216,000 or $216,415.15. Our expenditures were $1,0086,945.81. Our tax claim is $38,812.72. So that leaves us a balance of $3,990,656.62.
Make a motion to approve the treasurer's report. Second to hold it.
Second.
It's been moved to the second that we approved the treasurer's report as presented. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same signs, so moved. Just for the record, would you introduce yourself? We have a lot of new people here.
Sally Nguyen, Lebanon County Treasurer.
Thank you, Senator. All right.
My name is Michelle. Michelle Snately, Director of Human Resources. Personnel transactions under resignations and terminations. Isaac Romberger, caseworker two, children and youth resignation effective May 21. Kenneth Michael, operations technician, Department of Emergency Services, renewal effective May 9. Michael Lyons, operations technician, Department of Emergency Services, renewal effective May 9. Kyle Boyer, full-time assistant system administrator, Department of Emergency Services, resignation effective May 31. David Schaefer, detective, Detectives Bureau slash District Attorney's Office, resignation effective May 31. Mary E. Miller, Office of Court Two, Innovation Services, resignation date correction to May 2. Kirk Giuliani, full-time deputy sheriff in the sheriff's office, retirement effective July 2. Hunter Brown, full-time deputy sheriff in the sheriff's office, resignation effective May 15.
Make a motion to approve those resignations, terminations, tarnished specifically Kirk Giuliani, I came for his many years of service.
Yeah, so I'll second the motion and Kirk Giuliani since 1996. That's amazing.
Discussion regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same signs, so moved.
Underleaves of absence, Carmine Barbera or Barbaraia, Sheriff's Office, four-week leave of absence effective May 15, but expected refund date in June 12.
Make a motion to approve the leave of absence.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approved that leave. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose same signs, so moved.
Interchanges, status transfers, and promotions. I have two motions. The first, to approve the recommendation of District Attorney Pierre Hesgrat to add a second interpreter stipend to the District Attorney's Office budget at the rate of $1,500 annually, effective June 1, 2024.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve that interpreter stipend. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same signs, so moved.
Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the County of Lebanon and Teamsters Local 429 Court-related Non-Professionals Unit on behalf of the county's deputy sheriffs. And resolution of grievance number 37938, the county agrees to compensate the employees named in the MOU at the rate set forth in the MOU in a one-time lump sum amount for on-call time reflecting actual hours worked for the years of 2021, 2022, and 2023, with all parties agreeing that no further on-call wage payments are owed for said periods effective this day, May 16, 2024.
Make a motion to approve the motion as presented, the MOU between the Teamsters and the county.
Sorry. It's been moved in second. Have we approved that MOU? Any questions regarding the motion? Not in favor. Yes, Jim.
Is that for work during pandemic?
It goes back to, yes.
Oh, it's, it's.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
It's on-call time that they worked. That was quantified. We went back and had to quantify that amount that was owed to them to go. Fully by employee hour by hour was, you know, for three years was tenuous. So both, both parties agreed that a lump sum amount to settle that would be sufficient, so.
But just strictly for overtime, nothing to do with the fact that they worked or were employed and stayed with the county?
No, no, no. It's not a, it's not a retention or anything like that. It's simply time worked.
Nothing else on in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same signs, so moved.
Nervor Knees Promotion from caseworker one in children and youth to caseworker two in children and youth at the rate of $1,661.20 by weekly, effective May 26. Juan Lopez, change of status from private first class at the jail to full-time correctional officer at the jail at the rate of $24.59 per hour, effective May 12. Sasha Tracy, transfer from District, District Justice Office Support One in M D J Figaro's office to District Office Support One in M D J Disner's office, no change in the rate, effective May 26. Jasmine Friend, transfer from fiscal assistant in children and youth to fiscal assistant in M H I D E I at the rate of $1,405.59 by weekly, effective May 27. Bonnie Betts, change of status from general clerk C in the pro bonitaries office to part-time court clerk in the pro bonitaries office at the rate of $16.20 per hour, effective May 27. Lisa Birch, change of status from part-time court clerk in the pro bonitaries office to general clerk C in the pro bonitaries office at the rate of $1,117.67 by weekly, effective May 27. And Lisa Clark, transfer from Office Support Two in Domestic Relations to full-time telecommunicator in Department of Emergency Services at the rate of $19.28 per hour, effective May 26.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approved those transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same signs, so ordered.
Under other transactions, I have a motion to approve a request from Erin Moyer, Administrator of Children and Youth Services, to create two new casework manager one positions within her department at a grade 16 on the non-union salary chart effective July 1, 2024. These positions are 80% funded.
Make a motion to approve the request from Children and Youth Services for additional positions.
Sure.
It's been moved in second. Any comments?
Just to add that feels like it's annually, because I think it is annually, that we keep on adding one, two, three positions to this unit because the state continues to, the case loads increase and the state adjusts the caseload ratio and they send funding for it, as she said, 80% funding, but it's, it's continue to add to that unit because of the circumstance.
Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose same signs, so moved.
Area agency on aging would like to hire Michael Devine as a volunteer resource coordinator one at the rate of $1,624.33 by weekly, effective May 28. Area agency on aging would like to hire Jay Arenas as an aging care manager two at the rate of $1,661.28 by weekly, effective May 20. President Judge Tilok would like to hire Jocelyn Ruff as a law clerk without the bar for Judge Jones at the rate of $1,862.56 by weekly, effective May 20. Children and youth would like to hire Hallie Davis as a caseworker one at the rate of $1,562.16 by weekly, effective May 20. Department of Emergency Services would like to hire the following four individuals, all as full-time telecommunications, all at the rate of $19.28 per hour, all effective May 20. And that is Andrew Simmers, Harley Yalt, Joy Verena, and Andrew Morales. District Attorney would like to hire Scott Warren as a full-time assistant district attorney one at rate of $2,530.05 by weekly, effective May 20. President Judge Tilok would like to hire John Wagner as an adult probation officer one at the rate of $1,866.86 by weekly, effective May 20. President Judge Tilok would like to hire Sonia Almonte as a juvenile probation officer one at the rate of $1,866.86 by weekly, effective May 28. And voter registration would like to hire Jamie Shoemaker as an office support one at the rate of $982.34 by weekly, effective May 20.
A motion to approve those transactions, as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same signs, so moved.
Moving on to salary board, we're going to approve all the transactions previously, plus the following. Cooper Smith, salary increase, telecommunicator in Department of Emergency Services to TC2 at the rate of $21.77 per hour, effective May 12. Connor Callahan, salary increase, detective in the Detectives Bureau slash DA for five-year-plus level at the rate of $3,185.95 by weekly, effective May 12. Sarah Soto, interpreter pay added, juvenile service provider, interpreter in District Attorney's Office, interpreter stipend of $1,500 annually, prorated from the effective date of June 1, 2024. Kevin Dugan, retention payment, senior deputy DA in the District Attorney's Office, a one-time retention payment of $7,000, effective May 31, 2024. And Samuel Walter, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the jail, one-time, three-year longevity payment of $500, effective June 14, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approved those salary board transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose same signs, so ordered. Thank you, Michelle.
Yes, sir? Yes, I was coming.
Morning.
Morning.
The first time, so I think, do I do much, much feel first?
Well, let me ask if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and the position you have, and then you may proceed with your.
My name is Megan Stigwell. I'm the chief public defender for Lebanon County. I'm here today to discuss the possibility of the commissioners approving a grant opportunity that we have been presented. It is a non-competitive grant. Governor Shapiro has just passed $6.7 million in money across the state. It's to be allocated across the 67 counties. And Lebanon County has been allocated $95,501. So I have written up very generally how I would plan to use that money. And I do apologize because I've made some modifications since what I had last written. It just is a difference in percentage-wise how I would use it.
Yeah, I'll just note here, this is, public defenders across the state are, are trying to get this in as quickly as they can. They gave a pretty accelerated window here to get things in by the 23rd, so. She's outlawed and things being a little bit fluid. And as we understand, this is, you need to be creative and this is, I mean, to supplant anything currently, this is for banning.
Anything that's currently funded, we're not allowed to, to replace with these funds. So.
And the name of the grant, or what they're calling it here in the state.
They're calling it the Indigent Defense Grant Program.
Firstly, I would make a motion to accept this grant or apply for it. I think it's wonderful. We have been struggling forever. We never got funding for public defenders, so it's a wonderful thing.
Before, look, put your second, then we can.
I'll, I'll second that.
You want to finish with your presentation?
Okay.
Go ahead. The changes in percentages.
I would just say, generally what the breakdown is going to be used for is, originally on the first draft that I had given you was for a full-time social worker's salary. I think that probably where my office is currently, given the construction that we're going to be getting soon, we're probably better suited for a part-time social worker. I'm hoping for a start date of January 1st of 2025 and make that a 12-month term. It'll give us time to get the right person in that position, given that we've never had one. It'll give us time to figure out exactly how we're going to utilize the position. And then we'll also have the workspace to accommodate that position. We're currently, I don't know where I would put them.
So this is an 18-month grant?
An 18-month grant.
It's not atypical. It's not a 12-month grant. It's 3rd of July 1. It's an 18-month grant, so we have a little more flexibility there. And, and I think that, and some of you may have seen some of the email traffic from the, the county commissioners. Lists are being discussed. A lot of counties are doing this same thing by in integrating a social worker component into the public defender's office. Can you just talk for a minute about why, what, what the value of that is for, for, you know, what's typically just a legal defense? What's the social worker do?
So currently, as much as we want to be able to provide these services, they're not prioritized by the attorneys. They're more so looking at the legal issues of the case. But having a social worker on staff, we would be able to direct people toward housing services, food, health insurance, mental health services, drug and alcohol, education, transportation, childcare, and job searches. And while they're obviously going to benefit from having those services, it also would improve overall representation because we can use that down the line at sentencing to tell the judge they started here when we got them. And now months later, they have all of these things lined up and they're in a better place to succeed, but also not resuscitate, and hopefully we don't see them again. And then I can answer questions about specifics after, but I would also, if I could take the opportunity to tell you quickly where we started a year ago, because my one-year anniversary has just passed, May 1st. We've made substantial improvements in my office.
Can we just vote on this?
Sure.
And then you can keep them separate. First of all, any question? We have a motion on the floor to accept this request to apply for this grant. Any questions? For Megan? Yes?
On the, the first draft, it was the salary and benefits, I think it was like 55.35. So with a part-time social worker, are they going to be receiving benefits?
I would not.
Okay, so what is that extra money going to go for?
So then specifics I would lay out after I meet with Jamie and another attorney in my office, the mental health attorney. But that would give a greater amount of the money would be used for retention purposes, and also would go into professional training. And then any residual funds would be supplies, equipment, and case management.
They're very, they're very, well, you've seen the, the handout here. They're very specific on what you can, cannot use. The, the cannot is very specific. So really kind of corralled into a few different uses. And there's also not any indication yet on whether or not this grant will be renewed. This may be a one-time thing, so.
So the $95,000 spans the 18 months?
Yeah, and we don't know whether or not it'll, it'll renew. And the fact that it'll end at the, in the middle of the state's fiscal year, it's a little odd, too. So a lot of this is going to be unusual.
And it's, as Mike mentioned, some client is not, it's to supplement, not supplant. So that's another, make, you know, the fine line. You have to make sure that's part of the, yeah.
Look at this.
Anything else? Yes, Jim.
We had the issue before of finding public defenders, and there was talk about that funding. There was the whole thing with, with the judge, and he eventually made some concessions. Was there any discussions that this money could be used toward actually hiring more defenders to represent indigent clients?
It could be, but the positions would have to be new. So if it's already in the county's budget, then we can't supplant that budget. You can't have a net gain of funds by, or a net, a net reduction in the budget by gaining these, this grant. So the answer is that could be added, added attorneys, but that would have to, that would be created. And I think that Megan's got to.
Yes.
Expand a little bit, but we, you know, we do still have a vacancy and potentially two vacancies. We're going to have to wait and see. So she's still filling existing positions, so still depth there to add to the bench.
All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same signs, so moved. Now you can give us an update.
And sort of to, to that effect, when I started, we had myself, two attorneys, and one secretary. And in that time, the commissioners have supported us and encouraged us. You raise a starting salary to make us actually competitive with the surrounding counties. And so we have been able to hire three more attorneys, three more secretaries. We only have one vacancy left. And we're currently looking at two candidates, trying to make a hard choice about who's going to fill that last one. So right now, we're almost at 100%.
And backlog?
Oh, and the backlog of cases. We've also, you gave us a lifeline and gave us the funding to appoint private counsel to help us with the excessive caseload. And I was just starting out, and we have entirely pushed off of that. We don't, unless it is a true conflict, have the private bar helping us out.
Huge.
So again, we've made substantial improvements, and we just wanted you to know that we, we know that that's not possible without your support. And we want you to know that we appreciate it. I mean, thank you very much.
We've come a long way in the year.
Yes.
It's amazing, all the strides that have been made on there. So thank you.
Thanks for your leadership there. You're doing a good job.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Anything else for, for you to go? Well, yes.
Just to backtrack on the social worker that you've been hiring, you said you've never had this before. Do you have an idea of how many people they might serve or what that might look like going forward?
So like I said, if we do get the social worker to start January 1st of 2025, we have several months to work with. Public Defenders Association of Pennsylvania has a social worker on staff that has reached out to all of the chief public defenders, offering training in that just for the social workers. So I don't personally, I don't have experience supervising a social worker, but I can get people that are willing to help me figure out just how they're going to serve this candidate.
Did you guess, of your clients, do most all of them need some sort of support, or is there, say, there's a percentage that might take advantage?
Because that needs in the minority that somebody shows up, knows what they want to do, and gets out very quickly without any kind of need for services. So I'd say most of our clients need something.
Any work for this person? Yes, cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Moyer, good morning. Would you like to introduce yourself and, and your position, then you may proceed.
Servicing. I'm here today to present a contract for a Venco Incorporated. This is our automated case management system that we use every day to house all of our key-specific information in. This contract is for fiscal year 2425, and the amount of the contract would be $39,824.92. I'm asked for that you approve this contract for fiscal year 2425.
I will get the motion to that contract also submitted.
And I'll second the motion.
I would say this is one of the most onerous things that I've ever had to sort or sift through. I hope our counselor has approved this. Seriously, for that size of a grant or a contract, it's amazing what they have put you through. Any questions for the, regarding this expenditure? Anything to add, Karen?
No, we have been using a Venco for many, many years now, and so it has really been working for us. So this is so much needed for our agencies.
Right then. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same signs, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a good day. Thanks. You know what? You might feel like you're on the. Like, we're good. I'm sorry, what were you doing? Yes. So gentlemen, thank you for being with us. We're, we're running a little bit ahead of schedule, but don't make any assumptions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always good to make that clear. You're best when you keep getting ahead of schedule. Did I miss anybody?
Brett, would you like to introduce the team here? And then Horvath's going to be.
It's fine. My name's Brett Allen with Stiefel Financial. Mike Fattistelli is my business partner as well with Stiefel. We have Chris Jamison here. He's here, I think, about two years ago, I believe. This is the last time it was. He's the president and CEO of Uniplan Investment Council, which is a REIT portfolio, real estate investment trust. So ownership in different types of properties and things like that. He'll, he'll talk a little bit more specifically about that. So I'll just give an update with the report. Mike has a little bit more of an update after that, a little bit more recent. But if you open up your booklet that you have there to page four, four or 11 there in the bottom right-hand corner, this is just through the first quarter. So this is for the period starting January 1st and ending March 31st. I think I mentioned Mike will have more up to date after that. If you look in the top left-hand quartile there of the report, we have a couple of different periods. And the first one, kind of going across the top there, says current period, a year-to-date, they're the same, just because the report, just the fact that it's the first quarter of the, of the year. But if you go into the year-to-date numbers there, we started the beginning of the year. The pension was at $134,146,280.
Can you show me what your picture looks like?
I'm sorry.
My page four doesn't have that. Okay.
Here in the other.
I threw you off there. Sorry about that.
I'm like, where are you getting this? Okay, thank you.
Sure. So under that year-to-date column heading there, again, the beginning balance was $134,146,280. And then the cash flow or withdrawals during that timeframe was $2,708,373, and that's to pay the pensionees. Total return during that same timeframe, so appreciation was $5,855,056. And then the balance at the end of the quarter was $137,292,963. Then the column to the right of that is just a, a one-year number is what that is. So a year ago, 12 months ago, which would be April of '23, the balance was $126 million. There, you see that. Underneath there, withdrawals over the last 12 months of about $7.6 million. And then the return or growth during that timeframe was $18.6 million. And then, again, the ending balance, as I just mentioned, was $137 million, where we're at now. The bottom right-hand corner just kind of shows the overall allocation. That's something we always keep an eye on based on the investment policy statement. So what they call cash equivalents, or a form of money market, is about 2% right now, moving clockwise around there. The equities, which your stock ownership is 63%, fixed income is 30%, your bonds, and then alternative investments is 5%, which is actually the piece that Chris is representing today. The Uniplan portfolio makes up about 5.3% of the overall holdings. Any questions with any of that at all? If I could ask you to go to page six of 11, just to give a little bit longer-term perspective. So page six of 11, over kind of towards the right at the top of the columns there, we have a one, a three, a five, and a 10-year period. So that one-year period, if you kind of drop to the bottom line where it's in bold print, that's the overall return. Again, for the last 12 months, we just mentioned that. The overall return was 15.22% in the last 12 months. The three-year period, this is per year, is 4.91%. And then the five-year period is 7.6%, again, a per year. And then the 10-year number is the 6.52%. So any questions at all? Any of that?
Okay.
With that, so Michael, kind of pick up from there and give a little bit more up to date.
So I just provide you a year-to-date number through yesterday's close of business. So we're now, the, the mentioned plan stands at 100. So we're now, the pension plan stands at $135,493,600. We are currently up, and this is an unaudited number, at 4.03%. I will say that the month of April was not very good for the market, both stocks and bonds. Think the, the plan was down about 4.3%. So we made a nice comeback here so far in May. We're not recommending any changes to the asset allocation. It's the same as it was at the quarter end and well within the ranges of the investment policy statement that, that gives us guidance here for, you know, for, for the plan itself. Currently, as Brett mentioned, we do have about 2% in cash. Most of that's for monthly distributions. Likely when the, when the annual payment comes in, we'll likely keep that payment in cash. So that in future months, we don't have to go sell anything in the event that the market might be down. We'll keep that cash, not, not in cash, but we'll put it in T-bills. And we'll have that money coming due every month that we can pay the pensionees out every month. So right now a T-bill, we can probably get about 5.2, 5.3% short-term, which is safe and, and a good rate of return. One, one noteworthy thing is one of our managers, which is Naveen Smolka, represents about 1.5% of the portfolio is now on a watch list. Brett and I and our team have kind of been watching that along with our team back in the home office at Stiefel in St. Louis. Their, their performance has been okay, but they are acting more like an index fund. So we've always built this portfolio to be pretty defensive, actively manage, catch, catch most of the upside, but more importantly, protect on the downside. And I'd say over the last year or so, that has not been happening with, with this manager. So yeah, they're on a, they're on a watch list. As you know, we've been working together for, for quite a while. We don't make manager changes too often. You know, we understand managers can have a quarter or two or maybe even a three where they maybe struggle a little bit. Potentially next, our next meeting, we would come in, we might have a recommendation. So just kind of a heads up.
And that's just a little over 1%?
Just 1.5%. It's not a big piece of the portfolio, but.
They had changes in personnel?
They have not. It's just maybe, and then that happens. We see it with mutual funds. Oftentimes they're trying to chase the market, trying to keep up with the market. And, and then they end up doing just what the index does, which again, we have not really had that approach here. We've been more actively managing and trying to give you a protection on the downside. And I think over the years, you know, we've had a bad market. We've been down much less than what the market has been. When the market's been good, we've captured most of that on the upside. So just something we're watching and probably next meeting, we might, maybe a little more information to share with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further introduction?
Uh, no. This is Chris, President and CEO, Chris Jamison, as I mentioned, with Forward Uniplan. Just happy to have him here.
Absolutely. Give something on.
What was your circuit?
Great. Thank you. And thanks, everyone, for sharing some of your time with me this morning. Certainly do appreciate it. As Brett said, it's been about a year and a half, almost two years since I last had the opportunity to speak with you. And certainly a lot's happened in the world, a lot's happened in the market over that timeframe. And so I thought over the next few minutes, I would do a couple of things. I would just kind of remind you, I see some familiar faces. I think we also have some new faces that weren't here when I was here. Just remind you who Uniplan Investment Council is, how we kind of think about investing in commercial real estate, our philosophy, our process. Then share with you the results of a study that came out just at the end of 2023 last year that looks at different asset classes and the return of those asset classes over a very long time period. And then I finally talk a little bit about some of the portfolio and where we're invested in, what we're seeing in those particular areas. And conclude with a, a chart that's going to look at valuations of the publicly traded REITs. So, but this is your time. I'm here for you to help you understand what we do and what we're thinking. So if there's any other thing you'd like me to speak about, please let me know. And if you have any questions, this doesn't need to be a small one, you know, interrupt me and I can clarify.
I think this is a good piece of our education because with 95% being in the other modalities, this will be, this is your piece with the REITs. So that's good for everybody to understand what, what that is. It's kind of a unique part of our portfolio.
It is. I appreciate that. It's, it's, I find, and I've talked to financial professionals all over the country and I find that real estate is often one of the least understood, even amongst professionals like ourselves. So again, if I say anything that's not clear, because we're kind of real estate geeks at the firm, ask me to clarify. My first thing I say is apologize for the graphics. It looked great on the computer screen, the seal. But when I picked it up at the printer last night, it was, I was less than impressed. But if I get you to pay, turn to page two.
Which page do?
And we're going to be in this one now.
I'm sorry. I couldn't resist.
You say, um, Uniplan Investment Council, we're a boutique investment shop. We're essentially 13 people, 11 of which are investment professionals. We manage about $1.6 billion for institutional clients like yourselves. We're based in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. We were started a little bit 30 years ago by my partner, Richard of Rick and Purioli. We have both myself, a compliance personnel. I don't work directly on the portfolios, to be clear. I speak with the portfolio management team and analysts just about every day. So generally, if I don't know the answer to the question, we usually get somebody on the phone pretty quickly to help us out. But the, the real estate or REIT portfolio that we manage is the majority of the management AUM that we have is just under $1 billion. We also run another strategy that's an income strategy for investors that are seeking income. And then we also do something unusual, which is micro-cap securities. So very small securities, typically under a billion in market capitalization, that we find that they're often uncovered by Wall Street. And so if you're willing to do the due diligence, go in and understand the company, you might be able to gain an information advantage. And that's something that I think most investment professionals are seeking out. Turning to page, you know, I have two pages. Excuse me.
That was my reference. You caught up.
This is our, our portfolio management team. I mentioned my partner, Richard of Rick and Purioli. Rick's the lead PM. He's assisted by David Harris. Rick's been doing it for over 35 years in the public markets. David as well, for over 35 years. They're supported by a team of investment analysts. Collectively, the group has well over 100 years experience investing in these markets. I think Rick and David are both very humble people, but I think if you press them, they tell you that they could pick up the phone and get either the CEO or the CFO of just about any publicly traded REIT, if not on the line, typically a callback within 24 hours. Real estate, we, we kind of joke, is a, it's a small business. And everybody just kind of chats amongst each other. Everybody kind of tends to know what's going on with each other's portfolios, the buildings they're buying, they're selling, what they're interested in. And so again, just the benefit of having done it a long time gives us some of that access. Turning to what's page four now. Here's a little bit of background on the process and overview of how we think about investing in commercial real estate. And I won't go through every bullet point, but just highlight a couple that I think are important. That first one on the left, philosophy. And then you see just to the right of that, it says sector neutral to the benchmark and geographic focus, those two items. So the first one, sector neutral to the benchmark, that simply means that our benchmark, which is of course a real estate benchmark, we tend to stay sector neutral. We're not maniacal about it. But if, for example, let's say retail real estate is 15% of the benchmark, the portfolio that we manage is also going to hover around 15%. You never wake up and find us at 5% or 30%. And that's because even though as long as we've been doing it, I think Rick and David and the team would tell you that they've never found the metrics that would allow them to consistently and reliably place those big sector bets without adding a lot of volatility to the portfolio. And so instead what we do, and this goes to the second bullet point, geographic focus, is our philosophy is that real estate, at the end of the day, is a local business. It's driven by local supply and demand dynamics. What's the local GDP like? What's the local employment growth like? And what is local household formation trends like? Those three things, GDP growth, job growth, and household formation are really your demand drivers for real estate. And of course, we want to be cognizant of what the supply side is because we want to be in markets that have good supply and demand dynamics. Real estate isn't fungible, of course. So if you have too many apartment buildings in, say, Philadelphia and not enough in DC, you obviously can't take that excess supply like you could another product and move it to the market that's not at the supply level. So that sector neutral focus, along with the geographic focus, is really how we think about building the portfolio. One other thing I would say on the, on the process bullet point, we do a lot of our own original research. Again, as I said, the team has a lot of experience. So we actually go out, we visit the companies, we talk with the C-suite, we go visit the properties. I've even been with the team when they, they'll stop and talk to the tenants and they'll want to know from, so one thing to talk to the management, they'll tell you how things are, but how are the tenants liking the property? How are they liking the management team? And so that original research, I think, sets us a little bit apart from some of our competitors. And then finally, we're, we're low turnover. Real estate is a long-term investment. We don't try to trade around the portfolio and get in and out of positions. Turnover tends to run about 25, 30% annually. If we're in the right markets, if we're with the right operators, then we probably own those, those positions for the better part of a real estate cycle, which is typically at least three to five years. And that, that's what kind of drives that. Flipping the next page, this is, I mentioned, I want to share with you the results of a study that went on for 24 years. Actually, excuse me, the study didn't go on for 24 years. It went in on during 2023, but they looked at 24 years of investment returns. And this was done by CEM Benchmarks. They're a global firm who works with clients worldwide to sort of optimize their investment performance. And what they did was they looked at all sorts of different asset classes and they looked at actual pension plans, endowment and foundation investments. They didn't just use the benchmarks themselves. So they didn't just use the S and P 500 or the Russell 2000. They actually used the returns that the client received, that the pensioner, the endowment received. And this is the numbers that they produced. And what they found over that long timeframe was listed real estate, which is what we do. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. So the companies that we own are all listed on the markets. They're publicly traded. Most of them are on the NYSE, fewer on the NASDAQ, but all of them are listed and trade every day in the market, at least if the market's open. Listed real estate or REITs, which is what we do, was the second best performing asset class over that timeframe. Private equity did a little bit better. It also has a much higher fee, probably I think a bigger fee than anything else on there. I can talk a little bit about that towards the end if anybody has any questions about that. But I show you this because the last few years, especially post-COVID, post-2022, when the Federal Reserve was raising interest rates, I think these last three or four years, and I certainly don't want to speak for Brett or Mike, have been some of the most challenging investment times, at least in the 30, a little over 30 years that I've been doing it. And I've, I say that not just for myself, but I've heard that from other professionals in the business as well. So that's why I want to show you this. We're long-term investors. I believe you guys are also long-term investors. I certainly know Brett and Mike are. And so in these times where you get a fair amount of variance between asset class return, I think it's good to step back and say, wait a minute, what, where are the places that have produced returns over time? And then, of course, if you took the, the next page, there's different ways to invest in real estate. You can manage it directly yourself. You can own it and manage the properties, rent them out. And that's obviously a lot of internal work if you want to do that. You can own the publicly traded REITs, which is what you do through Stiefel. The other third one down, value-added opportunistic, opportunistic, it's sort of tactical. They might say, oh gosh, we think office space is really cheap right now, so we're going to load up the portfolio office. And we think XYZ is really expensive, so we're not going to own it. Core funds are kind of do everything across the commercial real estate spectrum. And a fund of funds is many different managers working together in one fund. And what you see again over that timeframe is the different ways to invest in real estate. The REITs have been the best returning asset class over that 24-year timeframe. And then finally, just one more chart, which doesn't speak to performance, but I think it's just as important because it talks to correlation of the real estate, particularly the REIT asset class to other types of investments, whether it's other stocks, large or small, versus, and fixed income versus real estate. And what you're looking at here in the upper left-hand corner, you'll see REITs in a column and REITs in a row. And there's a number underneath there next to 1.00. And so that's sort of the base. We're comparing all the other investments to how they act, how closely they act like the REITs. And to the right of REITs is private real estate. That's at 0.90, which you would expect them to be highly correlated. The closer that 0.90 is to 1.00, the more similar those, the investments act. So you would think that private real estate and REITs are, are highly correlated. But you go to the right of private real estate and you see the US long bonds are negative 0.02, meaning they behave very differently than real estate. There's almost no correlation. In fact, there's a negative correlation. And that's important because you don't want everything in your portfolio going up and down at the same time. Ideally, you want to be able to pick from asset classes that over very long time, periods of time, on their own, stand alone with great returns. But you want to build a portfolio that's mixed so that everything doesn't move up and down together. And I know that's what Brett and Mike have done with you. I won't go through all of them, but large cap, the US and US small cap, we're in the 0.55 to 0.6 range. So there is some correlation, but again, not highly correlated. And so if you have a good mix of bonds, stocks and real estate, we say it's sort of like three legs to the stool. You've really kind of built a big, a good foundation for your investment portfolio. Switching pages, if we want, if we could look at the current portfolio positioning, some of the things that we're invested in for you. This pie chart shows you that. You'll see the biggest sector that you're invested in is what we call specialty real estate. It's about a third of the portfolio. And I'll detail that, what specialty real estate is here in just a moment. But just to highlight a couple of the other major areas, it's really retail at just over 13%. Residential at just over 15% and then industrial, just over 14.3%. Industrial, if you think about it, it's really warehouses. So you drive up and down the 78 here, even on the 22. And just making the drive from the last time I came, I'm sure that there's even more buildings than there was a year and a half ago. So that's industrial. That's something that just, as less product gets shipped to the retail store shelf, it instead oftentimes gets shipped after you order it on Amazon or Walmart, wherever you buy it, goes to the industrial distribution center before that truck picks it up and delivers it to your house. So that's been one of the fastest growing sectors of commercial real estate over the last several years. Only just behind, if you go to the page nine, by what I said is the largest part, about a third of the portfolio. I think I talked a little bit about this the last time I was here, the specialty real estate and what it is exactly. This is an asset class that if you looked at commercial real estate 20, 25 years ago, really was non-existent. Specialty real estate is largely made up of the cell tower REITs and the data center REITs. And if you think about the cell tower REITs, you know, the, the real estate investment trust owns the land that the cell tower is built on. They construct the cell tower, they maintain the cell tower, but they lease space on the cell tower out to the AT&amp;Ts and the Horizons of the world so that they can serve their customers. In fact, the largest publicly traded real estate company in the world, and one of the largest real estate companies in the world, is called American Tower. It's just under about a $100 billion company in terms of market cap. And again, 20 years ago, I don't want to say they didn't exist. They were around, but they were in the school. Specialty real estate was less than 5% of the commercial real estate asset class. And the other big component of that is the data center REITs. If you don't know what a data center REIT is, I, I sort of use the analogy of think about it like a hub commercial airport where you have a bunch of traffic of airplanes. where you have a bunch of traffic of airplanes coming in. People may change planes, they may depart at that time, or if they get on another plane, they take another flight. So when you do a Google search or whatever search engine you you do, when you ask a question, that data gets sent out essentially at light speed. It goes over the wires to a data center where it searches for the answer and then it comes right back to you. Those data centers have been growing not only around the country, but around the world because, of course, the use of internet, not just the use of the internet, but your wireless devices that may can talk with it, whether it's watches, smartphones, et cetera.
How does AI enter into that? So you didn't call it that.
Yeah, that's a really good question. So AI is using more and more data all the time. It's searching data all over the world in order to formulate whatever answer or request you'd ask the AI to do. That takes a lot of energy to do that. And it's causing more and more data centers to need to be constructed because the AI is gathering more and more data around the world. And we think it'll continue. It's only going to accelerate. And quite frankly, there's so much power that's needed to run AI and power it through the data centers, even on your your smartphone right now. The power of your battery just isn't available to really allow your smartphone to run at a hundred percent. So they're essentially limited because if you were using, say, Chat GPT or on your smartphone, it would drain your battery like in an hour and a half. And that is, again, going back to your question, the effect is, is I think this isn't necessarily our portfolio, but related to it, I think, power management and the production of power, whether that's wind, solar, fossil fuel, nuclear or otherwise, is going to be a focus of this country over the next five to twenty years because of the use of technology. So does that does that help a little bit?
It does. I got my first AI that said, you know, we researched just for you. I'm like, I didn't ask you to.
Sure.
Yeah.
Let let me stop there. I don't want I want to be respectful of your time because I know you have other things going on, but see if there aren't any questions or other things.
Thank you for Chris further or for Brett or Mike? Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I see, you know, your retail percentage is at thirteen point three percent. Office is barely there at one and a half percent. Is there concern with these REITs with less and less people working in a traditional office and and, you know, telecommuting from home? Does that impact the REIT?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So the effect that you're having on office today and why it's such a small part of the portfolio is because it's really shrunk in the United States post COVID, right? Less people commute to the office, more of them work remotely. So vacancy rate nationally is about twenty percent across the US. So we really, and the index, as I said, we're sector neutral. It's just shrunk in terms of how much it represents. Interestingly, you mentioned retail. The same thing kind of happened to retail over the last ten years. Retail, if you looked at the benchmark, was about fifteen percent. In fact, twenty years ago was about thirty percent. But once people started to shop online, and as I said, less product gets dipped to the store, it goes to the industrial warehouse. Retail got all the way down to about five percent of the asset class. But over the last six and seven years, we found that, no, people do still want to go to the store. They do still want to pick up their groceries, their food, even shop for different items of clothing and so forth. So that retail has now rebounded from that very low of just a few years ago. I think office, it's still a little bit early, but I think you'll see the same thing over the next five to ten years. That office will come back and be a larger part of the sector.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. In Lebanon County across the United States, five and a half million people are looking for homes. We have a lot of real estate, commercial real estate sitting empty. Are there any efforts in the commercial world, the commercial real estate world? You take these abandoned properties and turn it into into residential housing?
Yes, great question. I I have kids that are all at the age, whether they want to be home buyers or soon will be home buyers. And and there's just a shortage of homes. There's a shortage of apartments as well. And so what you've seen in some parts of the country is that different types of properties that weren't necessarily built for housing have been converted to housing, most often multifamily or apartments, if you will. That's can't be done with all property types, though. Even an office building, the plumbing's not right. You know, there's plumbing in a central area. It's not for every room. So it can be very expensive to repurpose those buildings. But one thing that I think is worth watching is that post the financial crisis, when we saw a big downturn in housing, corporate America came in and, as you may know, started buying houses. Sometimes tens of thousands of houses, sometimes hundreds of thousands of houses, and then they turn those out to lease. There's some legislation or some talk within the government now to say we're going to limit the amount of homes that corporate America can buy. Again, it hasn't changed yet, but there's rumblings about it that I think will put, if that were to go through, and I won't speculate one way or the other, if that were to go through, that would help alleviate the housing shortages.
That's at the federal level?
It's at the federal.
You know, I I hate to rush you folks because this is a big part of our picture fiscally at the county. And we certainly have invested faithfully, you know, to keep the pension as solvent as possible. But I'm thinking there's so much interest in what you discuss when you come in here, and then there's always pressure on because the agenda's long. Maybe we could do this at a workshop as opposed to squeezing you into a full agenda. That way we could air things out a little further and not have the pressure of time as we as we do on these meeting meetings. So anyway, just a thought.
Sure.
Maybe Jamie can discuss that and we can go with that sort of point in the future. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey, just introduce yourself and then move along.
Well, good morning, everyone. I'm Holly Lakey, Administrator for Lebanon County Mental Health, Intellectual Disabilities, Early Intervention. I'm here this morning to present two separate things. So I'll begin with our new program for the transition age youth. Just a little history. On Wednesday, March sixth, Karen Rao from the Housing and Redevelopment Authority and myself presented a potential brand new program and housing service to you for transition age youth. Transition age youth are youth eighteen to twenty four at one of your workshops. After discussion, you very graciously gave your support to move forward with our proposal and our plans. The plans were twofold. So simultaneously, at the Housing and Redevelopment Authority would work with contractors and renovate the home located on North Twelfth Street, utilizing Health Traces Reinvestment Funds, while M H I D E I would procure a provider or the Housing Support Chief Management Services. Our request for proposals to procure a provider was distributed to our provider network on March eleventh with proposals due by April nineteen of twenty twenty four. On April nineteen, we were thrilled to receive two separate proposals from providers. And on April twenty fourth, our selection committee comprised of nine stakeholders carefully reviewed and scored the proposals. After thorough discussion and compilation of the scores, the selection committee chose Community Services Group as the provider. You received a copy of their proposal for today, and I'm wondering if you have any questions for me.
Questions for Holly regarding, we have the package. Thank you. Do you like a motion to accept?
We are seeking your approval to award the contract and implementation of the new service to Community Services Group.
And total cost of the contract?
Yes, the total contract, so the the contract for startup expenses is forty five thousand one hundred and seventy three dollars. And that would be from now until June thirtieth. And then their annualized budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five will be included in our entire budget packet and contracts for your approval in June.
I'll make a motion to approve the transition youth housing support case management provider contract.
Okay. It's removed in second that we worked this to Community Services Group presenting. And any questions regarding Jamie?
One quick one. Looks like you're you're close to on the schedule that you laid out here. Maybe a week behind that, but.
Right, very close to schedule.
And maybe you answered when I was speaking with Spitsky, but did you, do you have referrals?
So we need to make sure that the renovations and the home is ready before we can really think about referrals. So we want to hesitate just slightly on the referrals. What we're being told by Karen is that the home should be completed by about August twentieth, which means we can have everything ready to have individuals in September one. So that is the date that we're working toward is September one to work on referrals. Once we have a housing support case manager, it'll be great to involve that individual in the referral process and then have them set to go into the home on September one.
I'll favor the motion, please indicate by saying aye. No same sign, so moved.
Thank you.
Part two.
The second are M H I D E I contract amendments for fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. There are nine contracts in total, and that includes the Community Services Group startup at that forty five thousand one hundred and seventy three dollars. So there are five for early intervention, two for mental health, and two for intellectual disabilities in a total amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred and seventy nine dollars. We will work these expenditures into our current budget and allocations. Therefore, we are not requesting any additional county tax dollars to cover these additional expenses.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
And I'll second.
It's removed in second that we approved those contract amendments totaling one hundred and nineteen thousand two seventy nine. Any questions regarding the motion? On once hearing none, no, and favorite, please indicate by saying aye. No same sign, so moved. Holly, thank you.
Thank you. Good day.
Yep, me too. Good morning. Your patience has been rewarded.
Glad to be here. We brought our twenty twenty three summary for the Lebanon County Commission for Women. It's a little behind. Joellen was kind enough to remind us. We didn't actually present it this year, even though it was prepared. Our current chair, Amanda, was unavailable to be here today. I'm the treasurer this year, but I wasn't in twenty twenty three, and we're already thinking twenty twenty five.
Before you get too far down that road, would you introduce yourselves and then whoever's going to speak may proceed.
I'm speaking. Becky Woodhouse.
Isabel Torres, Chair of the Nominated Committee of the Lebanon County Commission for Women.
I'm Shane Keen. I'm one of the archivists at the Lebanon County Historical Site. We're working on a project.
Sure, if they talk about. Barb, would you like to pull that chair up next to Mrs. Newman?
So one thing to note on our summary. Yeah.
Introduce.
Barbara Gaffney, Board of Trustees, member of the Board of Trustees of the Lebanon County Historical.
Thanks, Barb. Good to have you here.
Our presentations are getting matched. I mean, but I did want to mention two of our biggest annual events are Glass Slipper for the prom dress sales and the Hall of Fame, which we feel like is a valuable contribution to the community and is what ties us into the Historical Society. And so this year, we approached the Historical Society asking if we could collaborate on a women's exhibit, women's history exhibit. And honestly, they exceeded our expectations and our goals. They've been diligent about research, and it is very Lebanon County specific. So we're excited to be here with them.
So we're just here mostly to get the word out and give you an update since you support us in other ways. We're not asking for money for this, don't worry. But we're just, you might be familiar with the front parlor exhibit we have that we open to the public for free at all times where that we're open. But we're looking to do something more substantial with that, with this women's history exhibit. And it's going to run from this October all the way through Women's History Month next year, twenty twenty five with a.
And that's March, is that correct?
Yes, March twenty twenty five. With a ceremony to open things off on September twenty sixth of this year that we would like to invite you to attend. And that exhibit is going to cover both notable women from the county's history, as well as just generally how local women participated in larger events, both locally and nationally, such as the suffrage movement or working, say, in the many factories we had here during World War Two. And Barb, how was she more intense?
Shane, your invitation, the time and location.
I believe we're still working. So save the date.
Save the date. Okay, I didn't catch that. Thank you. But the the press would be interested.
Everything that Shane said, he's doing a wonderful job for us. As some of you may know, some of you may not, the mission of the Lebanon County Historical Society is to preserve, maintain the history through paper, through artifacts and through recordings, which we take this very seriously. In fact, just before I came up, which made me a little late, at the moment, we're bidding on a blanket chest from Jonestown by rank, dated and signed seventeen ninety four. So let's hope we get it. In prior past years, we depended upon people donating to us. Those days are long gone. And we feel that it's very important that we try to keep Lebanon County important pieces in Lebanon County. So that's just a sidebar, fingers crossed, because we do have money limit. And so if you have any change, anyone that wants to donate, you can. Going on what Shane had said, Shane and Sherry, another member, have done so much research. We did not realize, I mean, we knew women contributed, but not the scope of what women have contributed to Lebanon County. And we feel that for today's youth, this needs to be showcased, which we're these two ladies approached us, and we would have never thought of it without them approaching us. We're working on it. I will give you the dates tentatively. Don't hold us to it. We would like to start the exhibit on September Thursday, September the twenty sixth with a reception. This will be provided guest, invited guests. And then the opening, we are trying for Tuesday, October the first. This will be free to the public. The front room is always exhibits are always free. This would be free. These ladies have approached the schools. We are offering, of course, that is free, but we're hoping that they will do field trips. And this would be from fourth grade. And that would be, of course, that's free, but we will also open the museum with a guided tour free also to the schools. This is one way we're we're spending our money.
And I I want to add that also includes students educated at home.
Yes, that's homeschooling, any any type of schooling, it will be open, open for them. They just have to call, make arrangement. We think this is very important and would be adding to our history. We have. as I said, our mission is to be this, and we hope that with all of the press and everyone here that the word gets out, we will be publicizing it and also on the ladies, Mary Bell and Becky, and on our website, it will be out. And however we can get the word out, as again, we feel that for a while, the history of Lebanon County has been neglected, and it's a rich history. And the ladies that we will be profiling will be from the late 1700s through to present day. As history continues, it does not stop at a certain date. It continues. So we're all excited. We thank these two, Mary Bell and Becky, for approaching us about this project, for all the work that Shane is putting into it. So those are, our main focus will be that. We also have future projects, which I see Pam is here. We are getting together children's programs. We hope to in the future to have three at the Union Canal Tunnel Park and three at the Society Building itself. We have a committee together. We have met once. We will continue to meet. And this, the money for these programs come from the Lebanon County, the ball that we have each year, which some of you have attended, and we thank you for that. The the other thing that we have for the last three years have had a free Christmas open house. And last year, we had over two hundred and forty seven people attend. We have, it's for mainly for the children. We offer Santa Claus. We have music. We have crafts for the children to make. We have our trains set up. But Shane will be working on another train set that will showcase Lebanon County's training history. So we're excited to again be back into business doing what we, what our mission is supposed to be. If there's any questions, we're here.
Any questions?
Do you have a title for the exhibition?
Women's History.
It just?
Women's History of Lebanon County.
Okay.
I would add. And we have, we just, Sherry just came up with one the other day that none of us knew about. So we we go back to, of course, the Coleman's through a lot of the women's that were first in in, and I will give you the categories tentatively that we're looking to do. If I can read my own writing, as you get older, you can't read or write, so.
Military.
Yes.
Case.
And I have there an arts, sports, oh, here it is. We have education, we have social, we have political, we have industry, and arts and sports. Anyone has another category that they feel would be, we're open to ideas.
Do you have somebody working with America 250 with that program?
Oh, we do actually. One of our other board members, Dan Morrissey, have been working on that, as well as with the Preservation Trust and some other organizations.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks for giving this forecast of what you're involved in, and this is very exciting. It's a big undertaking. And maybe we could, I don't want to overdo the workshop thing, but we have workshops on Wednesdays at 1:30. As you get closer and you have more, maybe you'd want to give it another, you know, infusion of for the media and for the public.
One last thing, we are going to have a box that visitors can drop a name into with the history of for the women. It will not be added to the exhibit per se, because the exhibit will be finished, but this would be for future history in the society. So we will have a committee that will go through those to read them. Hopefully, we get names that we are not familiar with.
Suggestion box. That's a great idea.
Like that little suggestion box. Okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What else?
Ladies also help me around.
You did, you deserve it, Barb. Thank you. Good morning.
I'm with Friends of Coleman Memorial Park. Make this quick. I've never done it, so don't really know what I'm doing here.
In my capacity as volunteer, your capacity with them.
President of Friends.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank everybody today for the Marcella Shale Grant. It's, the monies were awarded, the project's finished. We, it was a matching grant to reintroduce the American chestnut tree into the park. Friends of Coleman Memorial Park and all of you and making a difference all came together to provide those those funds. So the first installment went to buy the trees, and the second installment then came for maintenance and mulching, and then we removed a bunch of unsightly stumps that were around the park. So I just wanted to thank you all. We thought it was an important project. It was a risky project because it was a hybrid of these trees. I'm not sure if you're familiar, but they, it was a blight that hit the trees around the turn of the century, and they were important trees to the whole northeast side, providing food for us and animals, and they used it for building materials and everything, and then it pretty much became extinct. So this hybrid was supposed to be blight resistant, and we're struggling with it. So we appreciate the opportunity to give this a try for this reintroduction. Personally, my electric company offers a grant, so I applied for another $500 to them. And hopefully, we'll either buy more trees or get some experts in with that money to help us guide them forward.
While a hybrid, are these chestnuts edible? That was what I didn't know.
I tried to find that out, and I'm not sure.
Well, it certainly sounds like it was a perfect fit for the Marcella Shale, the intent of that that funding, so.
Yeah, so thank you all.
Very good. All right, Cindy, thank you. Thanks for your volunteer.
I'll start with a number of things here then before the conclusion of the meeting. The first thing I have is a resignation from Random Leisure from the Lebanon County Conservation District effective May 31st. If you all know Randy, he's been a very dedicated member of that Conservation District Board. However, he's finding it necessary to step back and take a break, and he has submitted his resignation. So if you accept that, we'd be glad to send him a letter acknowledging.
Thank you. Chance, do we need a motion to accept the resignation?
Yeah, may I? Going to set that with with Randy, thank him for his own service.
Would you mind if all three of us could sign that?
Sure, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
I'll favor the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those same signs, so moved.
To replace his, to fill his vacant, there are two processes. This this Conservation District, we're going to be a little more formal about it. There's a process to filling the Conservation District. We must seek nominations from a designated number of agriculture and environmental related groups. The state oversees that process. We submit to them, and then you get to select from those nominations. We could go through that process again to fill his position, or you can select from a an associate director. There are sort of those in the wings, kind of, they they participate, but they're not full on board members. Select from them to make them full directors. There is someone interested, Jim Tommennelli is is currently an associate director and is willing to replace Randy as a former director, so. And then that would expire the end of this year. We already start the process this fall for for new nominations.
He's worth full term pay, too. Yeah.
So if you're willing to do that, that would make the process a little quicker.
I'll need a motion to accept that. Moved in second that we approve Associate Director Jim Tommennelli to replace the unexpired term of Randy Leisure. I'm favor the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those same signs, so moved.
The Borough of Jonestown is requesting an extension, an extension to their Marcella Shale Grant that was awarded to them in 2022. They have been unable to use the funds up to the date, up to date, however, they are going to piggyback along with other grants that they've applied for and fully fund a flashing crosswalk lights project that they've applied for. Those award dates, however, have been pushed back, and they'd like to ask for a one year extension for June 15th and 2025. Take a motion to approve that extension.
Second.
It's removed in second that we approve that request of Jonestown Borough. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those same signs, so moved.
Request for hotel tax grant funding from the Pennsylvania Brown Swiss Association and Maryland Brown Swiss Association. They are holding their 2025 National Brown Swiss Convention at Lebanon Expo Center, and they've attached a pretty lengthy description as to who they expect to attend this convention. It's going to be held June 25th through the 28th, again, at the Expo Center. They expect to have people coming from neighboring states and not only spending the night and spending money in areas in and around the county. They're requesting $5,000 grant of a total cost of $53,595.
Okay, is there a motion?
Both will approve.
Second.
It's removed in second that we approved that $5,000 full tax grant. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those same signs, so moved.
Okay, and a number of exemption questions, disabled veterans who are eligible for exemption from real estate taxes. There are Josephine Kuiper of Washington Street, Lebanon, Gamal Henry of Cottonwood Court, Palmyra, Melvin Robles, Locust Street, Lebanon, Tyler Mann, West Market Street, Jonestown, Todd Trowinger, Oak Street, Cornwall, and Nicholas Brinkman, Blue Jay Way, Lebanon.
Make a motion to approve the six disabled veterans or spouses for real estate tax exemption.
Okay, it's removed and duly seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those same signs, so ordered.
Okay, next, I'd like to recommend to you some recommendation from me after having been the right to know officer for the last sixteen years since the the law was enacted, I would like to recommend that you appoint Matthew Beugley, our solicitor to right to know officer, effective June 1st. Matt came to us with some experience in right to know, having done representing municipalities as right to know officer. It's been a little bit of a a new experience to be dealing particularly with a lot of inmate requests that we get for right to know. But he is effectively conducting those now, and and I'm signing the letters, so I would like to transition to that and make that change effective June 1. Motion approved.
Second.
It's removed in second that we approved that the solicitor to right to know officer. Any comment from before we vote?
Yeah, we think a pretty good process with changing right now and helping with the request as well, so we're going to continue the good process.
It's a very cumbersome many times process, but it's following the law.
So it's still a team effort.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs, so moved.
All right, next, I've got an application for loss prevention program, grant program from Pennsylvania County Risk Pool, who is our property and liability insurance carrier. They offer a grant each year, a sum of $30,000 that we can use toward various projects that will either assist us in avoiding loss or protect protect our property and employees and such and the public from loss. And in this case, we're requesting, this is a recommendation from the Safety Committee for a project for $1,993.70 for the Sheriff's Department to replace some shields, helmets, protective gear. When they are equipped with this type of gear, they're more effective in their roles to reduce the need for excessive force and self-defense, safeguarding the property, controlling crowds, and and the public as well sometimes. So I ask that you approve this again for $1,993.70.
Make a motion to approve the $1,993.70 grant request for Peak Work.
It's removed in seconded. Questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those same signs, so moved.
Hey, the item that was listed on the agenda, receiving bids for County Bridge number one in Heidelberg Township, we're bumping that. We needed to readvertise that. Again, we did receive some bids, although those are not, have not been made public since we're going to be redoing it, and we'll come and revisit that again. If not on June 6th, we might ask that you have a special meeting on May 30th to accept those, since we have a five Thursday month this month, and any time we can gain toward the project and the construction season is better, so stay tuned. But if so, we'll advertise that with sufficient time and and get
agree with that.
An award out there, so.
I didn't look when I have July 30th.
Well, it doesn't have to be the 30th. It could be that week sometimes, potentially, but anyway.
That's cool.
But still, still within schedule for that. It's going fine. And lastly, as we discussed before with the Director of Variance and Aging, we have put the aging bus out for bid, and I have one bid to report to you that we've received yesterday for $2,325.22. This is for the the year 2000 model Bluebird Q Bus 3705. We did work with Pride Bill to get it started and running again, so we, at least we're selling a running, rolling bus.
It's the pride of Lebanon.
Pride of Lebanon Valley. Prouder 24 years ago. So 2,000, 2,325.22 is the bid. Take the motion approved.
Second.
Okay.
I'm sorry, from TJ Star Industries of Mount Sinai, New York. I'll bet you that, there.
I wonder if they're going to drive it back.
Probably.
It's it's so roadworthy. They weren't bad enough to bring.
Probably make it to New York.
I think the bid probably covers the cost of getting it picked to New York. All in favor of the motion to accept this bid on the bus, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, bless his soul.
That's all I have. Thank you. We have an executive session right about now at 11. Just made it.